What is your pleasure for the consent agenda? I made a motion where you put the consent agenda as written.
I second it.
All in favor? Thank you. The next board of selectmen meeting will be held on Monday, June 8th of 2020. I have no further comments. And anybody else? Ready? Public comment? Yes, Mike?
I have a couple of questions. Code violations in the past year, how many have been assigned?
How many have been assigned?
How many code violations have been issued to properties in the town west back?
I don't have that for you.
Guess?
I have no way of guessing. We can find out.
Well then, let me ask another way. If we assigned or we issued code violations, there would be fines issued. How much in fine money have we collected?
Again, I would not know that.
And a code's violation wouldn't always end up in a fine.
Beg your pardon?
A code's violation wouldn't always end up in a fine.
Right, right, I understand. Okay. At the July 22, 2019 selectmen meeting, three of us, Doug Lashley, Tim Kenster, and myself, we addressed code violation issues in town. The main summary of that is if the code is not going to be enforced, then people won't follow the code. It's kind of like the law. If you don't enforce the law, people will break the law. At that meeting, July 22nd, Madeline, you said to put the code violation issues in writing.
To put the complaint in writing?
Yeah, the complaint in writing. That was done by various citizens, I have personal knowledge of, in July, August, September, and October of 2019. I was one of them myself. Several citizens addressed code violation issues in writing, as well as personally with the code enforcement officer. They didn't get any response to my knowledge. I'm not saying that they didn't get a response, but just to my knowledge. So then, on March 2nd, three of us wrote a letter to all three of you individually as selectmen to... We addressed, we didn't address all the code violations in the town. We only addressed 10 within one mile of the town, and most of those were within a half a mile of the town.
Those would be alleged violations.
Yes. So, that's basically three months ago. We haven't gotten an answer. We like you guys, but we consider the fact that we didn't get the courtesy of an answer unsad.
In a meeting following that written complaint to the selectmen, in the selectmen's comments, I indicated that those complaints had been referred to the code enforcement officer, and that he was looking into those as his duties permitted. We then shut down the office due to coronavirus, and he has had other responsibilities during this time.
It's my understanding also that there was a piece of that, there was a question about a town employee in that letter as well, a complaint? Do you recall that?
Just Paul, I have the letter with me, but...
Well, because I just, because I want to address that component. I believe Christine responded that specifically, saying that a complaint against a town employee would have to be done in writing?
I don't think, no. It was not me that complained about a town employee.
Mike, this is a rather involved piece of legal and personnel and timing matter, and perhaps it's best addressed as an agenda item. We could do that on Monday.
Well, I disagree, since we've waited almost three months. I feel that we should have gotten the courtesy of a response to our letter, and I've written our congressional delegation in Washington DC and gotten the results with the IRS in less than 30 days. So the fact that we've been strung out from the letter from March 2nd, almost three months, and we've been strung out since July 22nd, we're not happy.
Can you, do you have a letter? Can you read? Because I'm pretty confident that we had a conversation, and that there was, because there was a complaint against a town employee, and that needs to be done in writing, and we responded as such?
Well, I think number one, he said March, and we're not going to send anybody out to individuals' residents at this point in time.
I think all you have to do is drive by.
No, you have to do more than that. You have to physically observe.
Did we pay, did we pay this code enforcement office for doing that?
Again, with coronavirus, we're not going to send anybody in bounds where. This is an item that needs to be addressed as a separate agenda item, not as a public comment. We've already given nearly 10 minutes to this, and please, if you have further complaints and comments against both us and the code enforcement officer, please indicate to Christine that you would like to be on the agenda, and we can portion you an appropriate amount of time.
And if you have questions you need answers to?
But we can't answer questions if we don't know what the questions are, so that we can find the information that you're looking for.
I would just like you to answer my letter.
Christine, can we respond to that?
Do I need to ask you at another meeting to answer my letter?
And then I responded by email.
Yes.
To Mike.
But I didn't get an answer to my letter.
But we didn't respond to the letter. We said that there was a complaint in there against a staff member of the town.
No, I think you're getting me mixed up probably with another letter.
I don't think that was part of that particular letter.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is that this needs to be a separate agenda item. So, and if you have, we can take your concerns from the notes, from the meeting, we can prepare answers for you. If you have further questions, I would prefer that you, again, either in by phone or email, let us know what they are, so that we can have adequate time to prepare separate answers to the questions.
Is three months adequate time?
In the...
In this environment, no.
In this environment, no, it is not.
So you're not working from home, and you're not working in the office?
We're not going on site to any home at this time.
And we're not.
And that's just not going to happen.
And there are processes and procedures for people to go on other people's property.
So you can't do that in 10 months? That's why I asked in the beginning of the discussion, how many code violations have been issued? I think the town hasn't issued any. And if the town hasn't issued any, that's unsad.
I have no idea, but don't know. That's all I can tell you. And what I can tell you is that this is an agenda item, so that we're not going to discuss this item, this anymore tonight.
That's fine, and I'm not asking for an agenda item. I'm just asking for an answer to our letter. Just to answer our letter.
But the answers aren't going to come from us. Some of them are going to come from the code enforcement. We will not be able to answer that question.
That's fine, I just seek an answer to my letter from the town.
But if you put it on the agenda, we'll have to see the rest of it.
We're not, this is, this is done. This is done for tonight. We will address your concerns. We will draft a letter. If you would like to be on the agenda to further discuss this on Monday, June 8th, we would welcome your participation.
No, I just want an answer to our letter.
Okay, we are done with public comment, so we're going to go on to business item number one. The Winter Roads contract. Christine, could you give us an update for what is going on?
Yes, I spoke with, first of all, I spoke with Steve today. He indicated that he had the same numbers from JR Hill that you saw at the previous meeting, and that there was some confusion with Ben. Ben had understood from Steve that the meeting was actually scheduled for next week. He didn't have his numbers ready yet. After Steve called me, Ben called me and said, "Well, I'm confused. What are you actually looking for?" So I think we're dealing with some miscommunication about what the select board asks for, and what you expect the contractors to provide for additional information before you make a decision. I would recommend that we table this again.
Was he given the, because I know you're looking to find out what his fees were removing this cost of sand that the town would resume, consume that, or make that their responsibility?
Right.
Did he get that information and was given the chance to then come up with great figures?
It's my understanding that he wasn't given adequate time to come up with that information.
No, I'm not saying the time. We requested to remove the cost of sand out of this proposal. We want to make sure that that's what he was asked to do.
Right. And he understands that now.
So I make a motion that we table the Winter Roads contract.
To the next meeting?
Yeah.
I second that?
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is in view of, in view of the unusual circumstances of not having had the opportunity to have a town meeting, which would have been probably this week. And we have had some discussion about how we might want to encourage priorities to be set among the various departments. I had hoped that we could do a workshop, rather than make those decisions in a formal board meeting, so that we could have the opportunity for just some free discussion about that. I would also like for us to have some free discussion time for, so that we can clarify some of the policies that we've had discussions about, and we have kind of wondered. Christine and I had a conversation on Wednesday when I went in to sign the warrant, and there are some old things hanging around that need clarification. And one of the interesting things about not having business as usual that's come up is that you get to look at what your systems are doing or not doing. So if we can have the opportunity to have conversations about that, apart from regular business, I think that would be very helpful to us. Madeline, with everything that's, there was a lot in the papers about town meetings recently, and lots of stuff in the papers about massive school budget cuts at towns, are we, are we going to go back to each?
Department.
Funding request, yep.
Yeah, I think we need to do that.
Where? I think that's one of the things that really needs to be done. I think we're, I think we're looking at loss of revenue. I think we're looking at people, likely people who are going to try to pay or are going to be slow to pay. So I think as part of that, I think that it would be helpful if we had the opportunity to dig into the budget, to take a look at where we see things work with the, then we can work with the budget committee, because they have in-depth knowledge of the budget passed and the history of things. But I think that it would be helpful if outside of business meeting, we could just have a discussion about what we see happening, what we think needs to happen.
We need, I spoke with Christine about this today. Some of the things that we need to understand is what were our state commitments, and what we're at risk of perhaps not proceeding is coming here. So we may be a tad premature determining what we have, or we can have a Plan A, Plan B, because if we lose, I think the state gave us $258,000 towards the school budget, which is very much at risk, as some of the other road components as well. So we need to be able to go back to each of the folks that have asked to be considered for budgeting opportunities, to know what the risks are, first and foremost, and what we could potentially be losing from the state, but also, you know, ask them to sharpen their pencils on elements, maybe freeze new hires, which is, I believe, Freeport talked about in The Forester, on things that are happening, and really find a way to balance our budget properly. But I don't know if we're prepared to, my point is to go through this right now, if we don't know what we're at risk of losing.
We don't know what we're at risk of losing, but we do know what we will need. And before we look at the whole overall picture, I think we also need to look at what our, what our needs are before we start cutting budgets. We have to, we have to know what has been spent and where we need to spend money, and where...
Right, do we, do we have it? I don't know if we have it here today.
Right now, most every department, the town office, school, private department, owns 10% of the budget.
Right.
A normal budget. So we know what that is.
Right.
It wasn't bold, we know the numbers were. Now we just have to wait and try to figure out what they can cut reasonably now, and have a handle on that. So we do fight up the state whether it's next month or October, what the number's going to be. We can know what their so-called bottom, bottom line is.
Well, maybe we go back to each request and say, revisit your request.
What I'm saying is the same thing. We should give them a chance to look at their budgets and say, what can you reasonably cut? And then look at the whole thing all over again.
I mean, I'm sure we're going to lose some road support, education support. I don't know all the Plan A that we receive from the state.
I can come up with some pretty helpful figures by first week of June. These are in flux, and they're changing all the time, and the state isn't going to be able to give us exact information, but we can do our best.
But if we can, what they spent, if they spent $258,000 we got from education last year?
And also understanding the state's statutory obligation to contribute a certain percentage. I mean, we...
They may or may not be able to do that, though.
But they have to follow the law.
We have to follow the law, the state has to follow.
So we're not going to lose all of our revenue, but I think we can have a good, solid discussion about what's at risk.
Well, and maybe you say, you know, to someone who submitted a budget, you know, here's what the potential risk is. Prioritize numerically what you want. So if we lose 200 and have $58,000 in funding, where do you want that $58,000 to go? So that they have, if they can prioritize what their needs are, then we have a way to...
We already asked them to prioritize. I think it's just CNN again, and maybe our paper.
Well, and decide what they really, I mean, if you're losing...
Well, we asked them to do that before, and I don't think we ever finally got to final, because Steve is kind of, he and they're, you know, what is his, is his priority survival? Is his priority Hill Road? And really list those out, so that we can, you know, we might get one road done.
And the priorities are very important. It's crucial, because there are some things that you're probably not going to want the town to delay. And there are also certain items that we've already committed to that we have to account for. So there's a few moving parts that we can sort of, you know, once we get together and have an open discussion, I think we'll come closer to understanding what we're up against.
So in your analysis then, Christine, can you put in what we have legally contracted in addition to what we are...
Yeah, and that's important information to have, you know.
Because I know we made some contractual bits and limits.
Right.
Let alone other elements that we have signed contracts for. It'll just be beneficial for us to see the whole picture before we move forward.
Yeah, I think so too. And I think giving us a couple of weeks to get that information together, giving Julie some time to offer her expertise around this, I think that would be really helpful.
And insofar as some of the history of some of the expenditures, where do we get this? Where did we get this habit from? I don't think that any of our departments have been spend thrifts. There's very little luxury, has been very little luxury in any of the budgets that I've been around for in the last 10 years.
But survival is a whole other road right now also. We're looking at not dipping into our savings that we've accrued for various reasons to spend, because people want to get in their budget.
That is one person's approach to it.
Of course, and the town can vote on that.
And our job is to, as clearly as possible, find out what the facts are, what the needs are, and then proceed. People will be looking for some leadership from us, but they're not going to be looking for the definitive answer.
They're not wanting them to see our 6%, 8% tax increase, so we have to...
No, right. So what we, what we need to do is balance what are the critical needs, and what are our resources, because we are in an emergency. So we balance, what do we have? What do we need? How do we bring that together in a way that is not going to cause undue hardship in anybody's household?
The biggest problem is that with the school being the biggest part of our budget, as in most towns, there's not much we can really touch there.
Well, no, but if they were looking at making hires...
Oh, no, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying overall.
Right, no, but if you look at, you know, where Freeport announced, that they're not going for that new kindergarten teacher this year. They're cutting back.
It all depends.
Those are the things that we need to evaluate.
It all depends on what type of students you have. If you're specialty students in the school, some of them are going to require an A, a tech.
I'm not saying A, it was a teacher.
Or if you're reducing class sizes. We don't know at this point. We don't know the social distance then either. We need smaller classes.
There's too many unknowns now.
Too many unknowns. And I'm sure that the school board is having hard attacks.
They discussed it last night at their meeting.
Yeah, they are in a very difficult spot.
As the chair of the board spoke last night, he wanted to remind the board that there's a lot of people in town who have probably lost their jobs, and are at a high time paying their taxes. So they're well aware that they are trying to cut the budget as much as they can. And I would encourage you, you know, a few minutes to watch the meeting last night. They're very concerned about the tax rate, very concerned. And there's so many things in that budget, they cannot change. They just can't. There's laws, federal and state, that says you must do this, you must do that.
And like I said, we don't know. It's social distancing, how are they going to move those kids?
Buses. How you got the buses? Five buses or one bus?
Yeah, right.
They don't know. There's no guideline yet, so it's, it's half a thousand percent of budget. They're just going through and paying the most bare budget they can, and allowing for some added expenses, whether tuition is going up like crazy, because of bigger classes going to high school. There's no control over that. It's like $100,000 plus over last year, just in tuition.
And don't go back to school. They're going to make sure everybody has internet and...
Yes. And if they don't go back to school, the tuition rates change, who knows?
Somebody's still going to be responsible for providing education, and that's going to cost money.
But I think all of us, and I think all of us are aware that times are going to be tough budget-wise, so I think all the parents, they don't have a lot of overspending on their budgets.
And have it for a long time.
So all we're going to do is do the best...
Maybe we find other ways, you know, maybe we buy a cheaper paper for the copy, or we buy other elements that are on top shelf, or whatever, I mean, whatever we can do to find enough ways.
They show you the town hall does not spend money on paper. We buy the very cheapest paper.
The town does, the school may not. Yeah, I think they do.
I think the schools, watch the video from their meeting last night.
In a month when they post it.
Yes, well, it takes a while to post that. They post about a month out.
They post it next month after the minutes are approved. That meeting will not be available until June.
Well, they didn't watch it in a month then.
It might be worth our, I don't know who they do, but to see what funding is available under, for due benefit of this coronavirus, is there...
There wasn't much for the school.
Yes. They wanted to keep on top, will do something in the future.
Emily was watching that, I believe she said, not exactly, I believe she said we qualified for $12,000 from the CARES Act. Whereas some towns, hundreds of thousands, we got $12,000. We got those numbers she said. But their second meeting of their proposed budget is next Wednesday. So I'm sure if you check at the school, you can find some way to watch their meeting.
If they do, it'd be a Zoom?
Mm-hmm, they do.
Google Meet?
Oh, Google Meet, yes. So, no, it's not Zoom in particular.
See Mike, you're right.
Yeah.
And are they providing a link for the town folks to participate? Where is that posted?
It's posted the website, but I emailed it to you.
It's on the town website.
Charlie sent it out to everybody.
Yeah, it's on the town website.
Under Meetings and Events. Under Meetings and Events, and you can also sign up for emails from the town clerk. And I'll be sure to send it directly to all three of you, so that you have...
You have to have, in order to prevent meeting bombings, that's figurative, not literal, you do have to be admitted to the meeting. So you do have to sign up for that.
In advance.
In advance, so that, so that the meetings are protected. We don't hear any naughty words like that? Yes.
Taxes, taxes.
Yeah, yes. We had a Zoom bomb on a family Zoom last week. It wasn't obscene, but it was strange.
Well, when you have that much family, you're bound to get bombed.
So, obviously, there's a good deal of talk that needs to happen, so I'm wondering if we can do this sometime next week, between meetings, so that we might be able to make a more cogent statement to the public as we solve it.
Madeline, if we could hold off until June, I think that would be better.
Okay, but can we pull what we know in the meantime, and see what we receive year over year from the state?
Well, they don't go back to work till the first, right?
Correct.
So that we could understand...
Okay. I was forgetting that people aren't in the office all day.
Right, and also, it's a workshop, so I'm anticipating that there wouldn't be public comment during your workshop, but people might want to attend.
Right.
So that would allow us to go over the 10-person mark, if people wanted to be in the room.
So what's, so what, for planning for that?
Oh, I will be planning for that.
No, no, no. The figures that we're looking for, can we see that in advance of the meeting?
As soon as I can get them together, yes. I'll send it in pieces, so that I don't hold it up.
Okay.
Whatever information I can find from Julie and from the state, and whatever might be helpful, I'll send them along, so you can see it ahead of time.
What would you suggest that we give the office time enough to get?
Probably June 4th.
June 4th? Does that work?
Thursday.
I can get that work.
I'll go for you. Okay, let's, let's set that for the 4th, 5:30 here.
So is there any workshop meeting?
Yeah. And we can solicit community comments. But I, I would really like to have us just have a free conversation.
When you say us, you're not gonna bring in the budget committee at that time?
When do you think you'll get information back from those that are reevaluating their warrant? How do you reach out to them?
Well, who are we gonna reach out to?
We're not there yet.
No.
We're not there yet.
We, I think we need to have a conversation.
I mean, it's, the budget committee is not gonna go to the road commissioner or the fire chief and say, you know, we're gonna cut, that's up to the town office and you can do that.
Right.
When we meet with them, we can go over what they're gonna present, but it's not about to say, cut your budget like this.
Or ask them if they, if they're making any alterments.
The town.
That's something that happens in administration.
So we don't ask them for a second submission knowing what's going on?
We don't.
Well, no.
The budget committee does not.
That's not.
Right, right. And that is, and that's part of what, that's part of what we really need to talk. How much of whatever is personnel? How much is contractual? How much is? And we haven't had to approach the, the budget in that way, but we do need to look at that, all that stuff now. So that.
And I will probably be putting some items up for consideration that are pretty big ticket just because I wanna be transparent about things that, difficulties that we're facing in administration because we don't have certain technology that would be helpful. Or with the building in particular, I think taking care of the rotten trim is probably pretty important to deal with very soon. So I'll be putting those items forward for consideration.
Right.
I, I think it's a mistake to just say, start from zero, cut everything. I think it's more important to the conversation that we talk about these items. And really decide, set some goals and say, should we put this off? What, how, how long should, could we put it off without adversely affecting the community? Really have a good, in-depth conversation about these items.
And have we, do we have proposals on what the expected costs are for them?
I have an idea. I have one proposal. I need to get a few more to really.
That'd be helpful for us to see.
Have a good idea, yeah.
Real close to what those numbers look like.
So workshop on June 4th, 5:30 here. Masks and social distancing and all that. I'm so glad we have the speaker. It really helps. And, and soliciting public input about what townspeople would really like to see as well. In the absence of town meeting at this point, it's, people don't have that opportunity, so.
Who are you wanting at the meeting as far as departments heads or?
I think at the initial meeting, it would be helpful to have myself and Julie. Perhaps even you dated. I think that could be helpful. And then maybe at a second meeting, invite the department heads, something like that. In the meantime, we can ask them to go back and look at their budget requests again and see if there's any areas where they wanna tighten it up or rework it.
Or as part of that, if we're gonna postpone things, then we really need to make a plan for when we might reincorporate some of these expenditures that we've put off.
Yeah, deferred maintenance I'm really concerned about.
I mean, we're, June 4th is two weeks away.
Yeah.
So it's not, I think we have time to see what you can come up with figures, what are potential risks that we may not receive from the state. If David receives any information on reduction from anybody in their department, that'd be great. And then we'll just look at what our strategy is. We need, we, there's a lot of unknowns that we don't have right now.
And there will continue to be a lot of unknowns because we have no idea what the world is gonna look like in three months.
Exactly. Three months, we could be closed right down again.
Because they know what's up.
We could also be open. Yep, I guess we could be open.
We have no cases today, maybe on the day, so.
We, we are, we are trying to make plans for things over which we have absolutely no control, which is an untenable position to be in, but here we are. That's why, that's why we have such elegant stipends. Do either of you have other things that need to come up? Christine, you have any other others?
Nope. Not today.
Okay. Then I think at this point I will ask for adjournment.
Motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Stand up. Thank you.